I'll be regular meeting. We need to order my seven mission. I'm working. Like the thing is, wow, I'm not a state for America. It's a really valid report and by the way, it's incredible. But everything in terms of. Therefore, going today by Rivera. Rivera, we have a change.
And no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Right, so at this time? And here you have a presentation on.
We do, we're gonna show you a quick video first and then Director Arts is gonna follow up after that.
Like a great day for a game that's growing in popularity these days. Pickleball.
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 Tennis badminton ping pong hybrid.
Once viewed as a pastime for the older athletes among us.
The sport spiking thirty-five percent in the past three years with more than thirty-eight thousand official courts popping up from coast to coast.
But they're running out of room for everyone who wants to play it.
Pickleball continues to boom across the world with nearly five million playing.
It started in nineteen sixty-five on Bainbridge Island, Washington. Three dads, one summer afternoon, a lowered badminton net, a couple of paddles and a wiffle ball. They called it pickleball. And over time, it took off. Today, it's one of the fastest growing sports in America. Communities across the country are building courts, raising funds and creating space for something more than just a game. And now that story continues in Hermiston, Oregon, where a group of passionate players had a big dream. He refused to let it stay just a dream. Hermiston, Oregon, a town known for watermelons, hard work and community spirit. When pickleball first hit the scene in Hermiston, it sparked instant excitement. Like many towns across the country, people found ways to make it work. Tapping lines on at tennis courts and setting up temporary nets inside the Eastern Oregon Trade and Event Center. With a little ingenuity, pickleball was able to make itself a home in Hermiston, Oregon. For many in the growing pickleball community, the dream was to build a space designed for the game from the ground up. It didn't take long before passionate pickleball players formed a board dedicated to building a Hermiston pickleball facility. But like many projects, the board knew a dedicated facility would require funding. And usually that means lots of tax dollars. But in Hermiston, when an idea sparks, we make things happen our own way. The board decided to raise funds privately. Greater Hermiston Community Foundation collected donations, essentially acting as the bank for the project. In other cities, courts have been shut down over noise complaints. The board decided that the best location was the Theater Sports Complex. A peaceful spot, close enough to be accessible, but far enough to keep the peace. And that's when the Greater Hermiston Community Foundation leased the land from the city for construction. Once the word was out, support flooded in. Businesses, civic groups, foundations, the generosity was unmatched. And behind the scenes, an army of volunteers donating hours, labor, equipment and expertise.
Dot is the critical part here.
Yeah.
That was fine tuned by Tim and. And uh. Dot. Somebody asked me when we started, isn't it pretty neat to be part of something this bigger than yourself that's gonna help the community? And I think that's a good way to put it. This will be here for a long time after I'm gone, I hope.
Well, I think for the community, the recreation value is just amazing. The social value is amazing. Health benefits are obvious.
I have MS since nineteen seventy-two six. It's gotten better playing pickleball, walking around and jumping around.
We've got so much community involvement, so many people that helped build this thing, donated in kind work. It's unbelievable.
Team building really is. It's really a good, clean atmosphere and good people and all walks of life. We have doctors and lawyers and I think it's genuinely building our community as a whole.
I've been at this with this porch for twenty-four months now since we started and we're already, we're just about done. And that's just amazing to me. I didn't even know if I'd ever see him done.
Starting painting next week, we get the courts painted. It's gonna be pretty nice, really, that should be pretty nice, it's really damn nice.
Oh man, good eye. We're done.
Wow, it's so good to see so many people here today. I want to welcome you to the opening of Hermiston's premier pickleball court. Two years and one month ago, the committee got together for the first time to start planning this. And the reason why we got together is that our numbers of people interested in Hermiston to play pickleball was doing this. And we didn't have an adequate place to play. So knowing the history of Hermiston, I said, well, what we've done before, we'll do it again. We'll build what we need.
So how many people come to the opening of a park? Ten, twenty, maybe a couple city council members and well, we had over three hundred people.
A lot of young people, a lot of old people. That's where I've met some of my best friends were here playing pickleball. So it's gonna be amazing thing for the community to have these new courts.
This group started talking about doing one of these and and you look at the fruits of what they done and it's amazing. This community is amazing though, but all the people that have donated and put in time up there and football field. I mean, you ask and people will help.
I would say to anybody who has an opportunity to be part of something like this. Take that opportunity because it'll make you a better person. You'll develop relationships with people.
I mean, there's the group of us, yeah, we're retired, most of us are retired, but you know, we want something that'll stay with this community and everybody will be able to enjoy it.
I'm really glad we did ten courts because I was here a couple of weeks ago at a quarter till ten at night. The parking lot was full. The courts were full, all ten courts, and people were waiting. So I think it was a hit in Hermiston.
This court is gonna last way longer than we are gonna live. So it wasn't really about us as much as it was about adding something to Hermiston to make Hermiston more livable.
It gives me goosebumps right now just thinking about it. When there's a project, when there's something for the community, that's what people really get behind. And they take their trades, each of these businesses, what they can do and what they can provide. That's what they pour into these types of projects and it's overwhelming to see that kind of support.
This place wasn't built by a corporation or a government mandate. It was built by people, by neighbors, volunteers and donors who believed in something bigger than themselves. In Hermiston, we don't wait for change to happen. We make it happen. And in doing so, we build something that lasts together. On behalf of the Hermiston pickleball community, we say thank you to all the generous community supporters, foundations, businesses and passionate pickleball players that all supported this effort. Without you, none of this would be possible. Let's play pickle.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just an awesome video, I think that, you know, wrapped two years of work. You know, it's hard to put two years of work into ten minutes, but the passion that the committee behind me put forth into these, this project is just immeasurable. I'd like to welcome them up. My, the pickleball construction committee would please step forward, that'd be great, join me. We have, we have John Levy here, Craig Lockwood, Emmett Walker, Tim DeWald and Anna Francis. There was a couple other on the, the committee as well, but the time and effort that, that these folks put into the construction of this complex, the hours, the time, we don't have the funds in the Parks and Rec Department to pay them what they put in and I'm so thankful for, for Emmett, John, for all of these folks that even now they're still caring for the courts. They're still, you know, the, you get to an end of a construction project and you've got all those punch list items. Well, we're, we've still got punch list items that, that they're going through and that they're working hard towards making this the, the best pickleball complex in the Northwest. If you go to the next slide, that'd be great. So just some stats that since June fourteenth, the opening day, we've had from our Placer AI account that shows cellphone data, we've had twelve point four thousand people visit the pickleball courts over the course of the last four months. Weekly average is about six hundred and seventy. The bottom chart there kind of shows the time of day that they're most frequented. Eight PM seems to be the, the, the time to go and time to play. I would say most nights, courts are, are open and running until ten PM. I mean, we're, when the lights go out, people are still wanting to play and just again, so thankful for the, the time and effort that this crew has, has put in getting these pickleball courts and building an asset for Hermiston. And so again, just wanna congratulate them and thank them for, for what they've done and, and if you haven't gone down to play pickleball or haven't joined five, four, one pickleball, there's a great group of people that would love to, to help you and get you interested in the game and get you playing. But again, wanted to present the, the premiere of our complex construction video and you're one of the first to see it, so. Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say, buddy?
We appreciate your support too. Right, I wouldn't have long if you guys were behind us, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arts, that's a heck of a video you got there. It definitely shows off the hard work, the effort that everybody involved put into this and, you know, they, they say if you do what you love, you never work a day in your life. And it, you know, the work that you guys put into this shows the love that you guys have for the, for the game and for the, the community. And I can't, I can't say enough good things. My only regret on the whole thing is that I was unavailable that day for opening day to be there. But the, the work that you guys put into it and the pride that you have in it is is, I, I, I'm at a loss for words, I really am, which is kind of weird for me. But thank you, thank you for, for your hard work and, and making Hermiston a better place. Anybody else wish to make comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just again personally just wanted to say thank you and congratulations. I remember being on the council. It wasn't even two years ago, two, three years ago where this idea was coming forward. We were helping you guys look for a location. I remember seeing a couple of the representatives up at the Eagle Tech Committee looking for places that we could potentially house this project. So I'm really happy this project came to fruition, that we found a great spot and that there's so many people that are interested in the court. So it's a huge testament to, to you guys for, for doing the work. I moved here ten years ago and so I've gotten to really know this community really well. And over the last ten years, I'm seeing who the movers and the shakers are. And so I appreciate, I consistently hear the same names come up again whenever there's a big project, whenever there's a project that, you know, just does a lot of good for this community. So I thank you, thank you all for the work that you've done and I'm really happy to see the courts in such impeccable world-class shape. And just a little, going even a little further, I, I really do like the inclusion of even a court for people that are more handicapped or are less able to play and, and finding ways to include everyone in the community. And so I appreciate the inclusivity that you, that you guys have shown in, in the construction of the pickleball court. So job well done, thank you.
I also wanna thank you for all of your hard work. I know that it was a massive endeavor that you took on. I know that grants were sought out and you guys came together and it's remarkable what you have done. Most people, you know, when they retire, they just kind of stay home and do other sorts of volunteers, but not you guys. You guys know how to roll up your sleeves and get your hands literally dirty and are not afraid of a big job. So Hermiston is much better because of the work that you guys are doing and this is, this will be a legacy for each of you. So we appreciate everything that you do for Hermiston and for everyone, for all of the generations, not, you know, this year's generation, but the ones coming up because we have a great community and what you have done shows what Hermiston, what the Hermiston community is all about. So I know that thank you is not a big enough word, but it really comes from the heart.
Okay, again, thank you and good luck on it. All right, next up, citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to do, please do the following. I mentioned comments to not more than five minutes. State your name and address and direct your comments to me. Welcome.
I'm here, he's here. Because he's concerned about these pop-up vendors.
Okay, need your name.
Oh, sorry, Teresa Pena Loza.
Okay. Your address.
It's three ten Krikatah in Umatilla, nine seven eight two eight. His name is Javi.
Well, my name is Luis Diaz. I live in a hundred thirty East Cornell Place here in Hermiston.
Um, he is the owner of Javi's Tacos. And he's concerned about the pop-up that are up there selling after hours. It's kind of, they don't have any of their, yeah, permits, no permits or none of the regulations are being followed. And he's just wondering what, if there's anything that's gonna be done about them or is concerned.
It is something that is being looked into at the moment, that much I can tell you.
Okay.
It's, I can't give you what's, what's taking place, but it is being looked into.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's what I gotta do, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for coming and bringing it to us. Okay, um, next item is consent agenda items. Consent agenda items A and B. Do we have any council comments or questions on content, sent agenda items A and B? Any public comment? Council questions? Anything need to be removed? Okay, motion to approve consent agenda items A and B? So moved?
Second.
Moved by Council McCarthy, seconded by Council Duran. Roll call.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Nothing removed from the consent agenda, resolution twenty-three ninety-five, accepting and approving HES power sales agreement with BPA. Mr. Rivera, this appears to be your, your wheelhouse.
You know, it worked out well tonight for me. Um, so tonight, we, you have a resolution in front of you. This is really a continuation of the formation of Hermiston Energy Services. We have been a customer of Bonneville Power Administration since two thousand and one. We came on and the original contract, then we did our second iteration, the contract we're currently in, which was called the Regional Dialogue Contract. That's set to expire in twenty-eight, in twenty twenty-eight. And so tonight we have the next iteration of that contract. So I put the background in your packet. I also included the full contract for you if you have questions. But just a little background, so BPA is Hermiston Energy Services Wholesale Energy Provider. That's where we get a hundred percent of Hermiston Energy's electricity. So HES as a public power utility, as a public power entity, we are cost-based, community-owned. Everybody who receives power from Hermiston Energy Services actually covers the cost, makes decisions, provides input to council, council makes decisions on that. This is different from Pacific Core who served the city of Hermiston prior to two thousand and one. They're an investor-owned utility, so they're profit-driven, not cost-based driven like public power. Stockholder owned, not by the members that they serve or customers they serve. So because of that, we are considered a preference customer to the federal hydro system. The Bonneville Power Administration markets the power that comes off the dams, the nuclear plant in the Tri-Cities, a mix of some renewables. But because we're a public entity, we have first rights to that low-cost reliable power. And so as part of that, they assign contracts to all the public power entities within five states. And so this is that next version of it. So the new contract is called the Provider of Choice. It would go into effect October first, twenty twenty-eight through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And this is a result of a collaboration of public power entities, representatives like myself. I've been working on this project, really kind of cleaning up the things that didn't work in the previous contract as well as we could. Trying to put in provisions for a significant change in technologies over the next twenty years. Giving us opportunities and options as a load-following customer. So this isn't an agreement that just happens. It's over five, six years of work that, that I personally have put into getting to tonight. But really, it's a continuation. There's not significant changes in the contract that Bonneville's offering, but it's always good with a contract like this to revisit it and have provisions in it that allow us to revision it. So the great part about Bonneville Power Administration is they're obligated to meet HES's peak load needs. They're also obligated to meet the large fluctuations from our summertime usage, the demand in the summer and the demand in the winter. So they guarantee to us that twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, they will meet the demands that we have, even if they're outside of the parameters of historic usage. And so the value of that is really immeasurable. So we appreciate the relationship with BPA. It's a lot of work, but it also creates a lot of value. So just kind of some background, so this is HES's residential rate comparison. You've seen this slide every time I've pretty much done a presentation. This shows what an average residential rate payer in the city of Hermiston with HES is paying today. Last year, we adopted the rate adjustments and this reflects phase one of that. And then it also reflects other organ utilities nearby Milton Freewater, Umatilla Electric, Columbia Basin, which serves Hepner. Also Pacific Power and then the Oregon Average, Portland General Electric and the National Average. So you can see the National Average and even the Oregon Average were significantly below that. And that's really directly tied to our power purchase agreement. About forty-six percent of HES's budget is wholesale power purchases. So anything that occurs with BPA, we're, we're very diligent in tracking, tracking that. But as you can see, all the utilities on the left of Pacific Power, those are all public power entities. Those are all recipients of Bonneville Power Administration. And that's really the difference, what separates us from the investor-owned utilities is the access to that federal hydro system. So I just wanted to give you an idea of really the value that we get from partnering with Bonneville. If we didn't have Bonneville in place and HES tried to go out and do this on their own, we'd be looking at at least twice to maybe three times the cost to try to get a power purchase agreement that would follow the loads and the fluctuations. So there's, there really is tremendous value. So that's what I brought to you tonight is just the next iteration of this contract and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have related to it.
Council questions? Counselor Broom.
This is just for the record, Mr. Rivera, but HES, it does it, it does not serve the data centers in the region, is that correct?
That's correct, counselor. HES has no data center load. We have looked at opportunities with data center load that have located in our region. And because of the risk really for a utility our size, we felt like there were other providers that could serve it more efficiently. And so previous years, we brought to you some service territory transfers as well as customer allocations agreement with Umatilla Electric to ensure that really this, the HES rate pairs, which is really a small rate base, didn't absorb that risk. Not that we wouldn't look at opportunities in the future, but at the time, we just really felt like other utilities in the area could, could still public power be more efficient in serving that load and minimizing the risk of the rate pairs for HES. So no, we don't serve any data center load.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. I just wanted to clarify for that for the record, because I, I have a feeling that some people in, that are receiving services from HES might think that we're subsidizing with data centers in the region and that's just not the case. It's purely for Hermiston customers.
And, and that's an excellent question, counselor. One of the provisions of the Federal Power Act won't allow us to use BPA power for data center loads because typically they exceed that ten average megawatt load. And so there's provisions in the BPA contract that even if we did acquire a data center, this contract would not be viable to serve it. So this is strictly for the current utility.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
And that was my question. Thank you for summarizing it because a hundred and twenty-one pages to read through a bunch of acronyms kind of gave me a headache. But it was interesting to read all of the stipulations, so. Which is a follow-up question to what Counselor Barron asked. How do you forecast the loads then?
So a lot, thank you, Counselor, it's a great question. So forecasting loads, typically we do look backs. It's based on previous year's loads. The forecasting also includes any anticipated new load. We look at the growth of the system, what we anticipate coming. Um, we look at the growth of the system, what we anticipate coming in when we meet with, um, prospective new, uh, residential developments. Um, businesses, larger load businesses like a food processor or a school district, if they're going to add a new school. Um, that has a large enough effect, um, for us to adjust our forecasting. And we work with Bonneville Power Administration, they have the federal higher system, they have their full entities of nameplate generation. They take all the utilities in their historic load and really divide it. So we're each allocated a percentage of the federal hydro system, each utility based on historic load. So we have, um, not to get too much in the weeds, but they give us a piece of that and we work within that. Now, if during this next rate period we exceed that. Bonneville also comes in and says, we will go to market and work with other utilities that are over what the capacity of the federal system is. And acquire those resources on your behalf at the time you need them. And so that's another great value of this contract is the flexibility it allows, even if we do have some larger growth or faster growth than we anticipate.
Thank you.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, since the inception of, um, HES. Bonneville has provided our power.
That is correct. When, um, the city chose to purchase, um, the electric utility from Pacific Core in the early two thousands. Um, we signed an agreement with Bonneville Power Administration, and we've been with them the whole time, and I can go back one slide. If you could go back, thanks, Ollie. So if you look at HES today, even with the phase one of our rate increase. If customers were still with Pacific Power, um, what is that, about a ninety-three dollar difference on average for a customer? Um, us going and forming our utility just on the residential side. Is about four and a half million to five million dollars annual savings just on the residential side to the rate payers. So that's the amount of money customers are keeping in their pockets, because the city council chose to go down this path and create its own utility. So annually, that's the amount of money we're saving. Day one, we set our rates exactly what Pacific Core's rates were, and through the years, that's the kind of cost savings we're seeing. So there is real tremendous value in the decision, um, that the council made, uh, for HES. And so we're really thankful, and, and I think as the community understands that rate increases are never something that you want. But this contract tonight continues that stability and, and affords the city residents that lower cost access to power. So, um, I'm thrilled, um, that we're part of it. Um, but at the same time, as public power, it is our right to have access to that system. It was built for that in mind, and so it's a great partnership.
They were, um, great people to work with. You know, in the beginning, we would go down to their corporate offices, very Portland, and, um. They were very willing to accommodate what we needed and wanted at the time.
Yes, and I still make that trip monthly, and so it's, uh, it's an ongoing relationship and. Um, and it's really a symbiotic, because they're owned by us like the rate payers own HES.
Mr. Rivera, uh, in, when we worked on the Hermison twenty forty committee. Uh, there's a couple of projections that projected Hermison to be closing in on thirty thousand residents by around twenty forty. This contract is set to go to twenty forty-four. So with an expansion of close to maybe fifty percent of our population by then. Do we feel confident that they'll be able to supply us with power up until even with the population increase forecasted?
Uh, councillor, that's an excellent question, and that was one of the conversations that we've had, um, regionally. There's always a threat to the federal system, um, just this past, uh, past year. Um, the current administration pulled out of the twelve fourteen agreement. Um, that was kind of the agreement with the Lower Snake River Dams and the studies. Um, Oregon and the state of Washington are back in litigation, um, revolving around the Lower Snake River Dams. Um, there's always, um, concerns about salmon survivability and being good stewards. As public power, we feel it's important to be a good steward of the environment and salmon survivability. But at the same time, there's a balance of affordability and reliability. And so to address your question, um, that's something that people way smarter than me are working on every day. Um, acquiring new resources, um, SMR technology, like, um, a small modular nuclear. Those type of solutions, um, looking out into those, but Bonneville's going to be a partner in acquiring those. What essentially we're saying, or if we agree to this, and Bonneville's saying, is that no matter what happens. We will work with you to meet your load. And there's going to be tough years, like we've seen some tough years with some higher-than-anticipated rate increases from Bonneville. Um, because of things like salmon survivability, infrastructure costs, um, power in the region. Um, but it's something that we're both agreeing to work together on to find a solution, ensure that we keep the lights on. But, um, it's, it's something we watch every day, and, and there's always concerns about, um. Future issues that's going to affect the industry, and so we just need to be diligent and, and communicate and work as best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. I feel a lot better knowing that there is a guarantee, and, uh, even in spite of, you know. Our, our growing demands here as a city. Appreciate your answer.
So on those rates that you show right there, those are today's current, they, they don't reflect any increases that. Any of the, the other blue lines up there would get in the event of a rate change by Bonneville. Or their, or their.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when I came to you previously, when we talked about the rate adjustments that we had, and we faced it in over eighteen months, over three. Um, that was prior to a lot of the other public power entities making rate adjustments. So Milton Free Water raised their rates ten percent, it's reflected there. Um, Umatilla Electric, October first, their rates went effect, um, so it's reflected there. And Columbia Basin also has adjusted their rates. So the full impact of our rate increase will be at a hundred and fifty dollars average residential rate. And that's really in line with the other area public power entities. Milton Free Water has no debt on their utility, um, and that, that kind of five to seven percent is what keeps their rates a little bit lower. They're very similar in size to Hermiston Energy Services. Um, but yeah, this really keeps us cost competitive. So HES today, March first, and then October first, that's where we'll be at.
Perfect. Okay, um, any public comment? Looks like no. Uh, any council comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three ninety-five and lay upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by councillor Roberts, seconded by councillor McCarthy. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. There you go, Mr. Rivera, knock them dead.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, uh, next up, September twenty twenty-five monthly financial report.
Director Palacios is going to handle the first part of the update.
I was trying to get out of it, but Nate wouldn't, wouldn't go for it, so.
Well, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Um, for tonight, I have the September, uh, monthly financial reports ending September twenty twenty-five. We are twenty-five percent of the way through the fiscal year. Um, the first report is for the Hermison Urban Renewal Agency, that's pretty quiet right now. The only thing we're waiting for is for the North Hermison Urban Renewal Area. The right-of-way appraisals have been completed, and we're still hoping to go out for bid later this winter, but. Uh, that's so far, we'll just hopefully that will happen this winter. As I stated before, for the general fund in the, in the city of Hermiston, the third month, twenty-five percent of the way through this current fiscal year. Monthly revenues ended under projection by about four hundred one thousand dollars. This is primarily due to the change in the building fee and grant revenues. We moved the building department to their own dedicated fund, and we have, um. Our property taxes have not come in yet, and those should be starting to come in in November. Monthly expenses were over projection by about one point eight million. Primarily due to the transfer again for those building funds, for those restricted monies that we moved to their own dedicated fund for this current fiscal year. City council, airport, and non-departmental are over budget. Um, this is due to the annual LLC membership, which comes out of the city council budget. Capital outlay in the airport for the hangars and the purchase of the property. Um, and then the transfer again for the building inspection funds respectively. Uh, we had four, um, funds that, four, four departments, pardon me, that are over budget due to seasonal activities. Parks are at twenty-eight percent or three percent over, Parks Utilities at thirty-four percent or about nine percent over. Pool, uh, at forty-nine, uh, which is about twenty-four percent over. But again, this is, the pool's just winding down all their activities during the summer. And then recreation, recreation at twenty-seven percent, just slightly over by two percent, and again, just due to seasonal activities. Um, I am happy to report that we are at minimum fund balance for the general fund. I'd reported last month that we were projecting to fall under that minimum balance of two point nine million. But now we're, we're, um, we're going to be about three hundred thousand as, currently for projections. And I anticipate that number to remain about the same as we move through the fiscal year. But we are watching it to ensure that, um, we are good for the remainder of the fiscal year. Did I miss one? No, yeah, special revenue funds. Pardon me. Again, the new building inspection fund activity is included, and, uh, the special revenue fund now, uh, special revenue summary now. Is that we have their own dedicated fund. Um, Eotech revenues do not reflect any reimbursement from the campground project. We are still finalizing, um, I believe, some of those project contracts, um, for, with AWS. Eo, Aotech activity for personnel, materials, and services reflects seasonal events, um, so those are slightly over. And then for the utility and street funds, the street fund is slightly under projection, and this is just due to timing of gas tax turnovers. The state likes to hang on to those as long as possible before they give them to us, so. Um, with that, I'm happy to, I'm return it to Mr. Rivera for the CIP portion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, so these are all the projects we have in works, there's additional detail in your packet. Um, I'm happy to forward any questions, um, to Mr. Morgan or councillor, or city manager Smith, um, that you have on it. But, um, I don't handle the day-to-day on these, and so if there are questions, I'm happy to, to follow up with them and, and get any answers back to you. Same with, um, Hangar Replacement Library, the parks.
Okay, any council questions on that, Ms. Slinton?
Um, I have a, a question concerning the, uh, uh, building inspection department. Is that a new department, and how many employees work for that department, and when did it start?
Sorry, I was trying to turn my mic back on. Uh, no, it's not a new department, it's an ongoing department. But we moved the department into their own fund, um, out of the general fund. So that's, um, because they're, because of the funds are restricted, we wanted to move those into their own fund to be, to be much more transparent about what's. What those funds are, can be used for.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other council questions? Seeing none, uh, looks like we're limited to the public unless there's somebody online. Okay, council comments? No comments? Okay, good. Can I get a motion to accept the September twenty twenty-five monthly financial report as presented?
No move.
Second.
Been moved by councillor Myers, seconded by councillor Roberts. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, we're back up at bat again, Mr. Palacios, how about the quarterly investment report for twenty twenty-five?
Okay, very exciting stuff, I know. Um, here's, I'm presenting the quarterly investment report for the third quarter ending, um, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, uh, again, this is a new format for this second presentation, so I'm not going to go through this whole slide. Only to say that it's, uh, summarizes investments by type and investment, and they're presented in this, uh, new format. We have, um, primarily, I guess, is the column that, uh, the percent of portfolio, that just shows the, the ratio of each investment type in the city investments holdings. And this is important because under our policy, we can only have so much investment. In a certain types of investment, and that ratio is how we keep track of that, uh, along with my, uh, the advisor that we use. Total investments end in September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, we're approximately thirty million dollars of that, um. A port, a large portion of that is from the construction money that we are still using up to wrap up our ongoing projects. A total of four point six eight million was deposited to the LGIP, this was from various sources for reimbursements, et cetera. One point five million was moved from the LGIP account to fund ongoing capital projects. This was primarily the PD and the library. Um, interest earnings for the quarter ending September thirtieth totaled to, uh, about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And the average interest earned was about one point five percent. And the reason that's slightly low is because we're still redeeming some low earning bonds that were well below two percent, even one percent. Um, so as those mature or are called, uh, by the market, the rates are going up. I will say that the Fed has met, and in their infinite wisdom, they met in September, and they cut the rate a quarter percent. So we will start to see those effects, the LGIP lags behind that about ninety days. And so we anticipate, um, that the Fed will cut interest rates again, I think they're meeting in November. Um, they're going to cut it another quarter, even half percent. So, um, currently we are still able to make some good purchases in the market on bonds. And I'm, I work closely with our investment advisor and, and try to get the most bang for our buck, for lack of a better word, on those investments. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council questions, councillor Broome.
I'm just curious on the advisor that, uh, we are working with as a city. I know when we had our previous financial manager, or finance director, he was working with someone, I think, out of central Oregon. Or maybe on the west side of Oregon. Do we have the same, I, I guess, uh, partner that we're working with, or is it somebody different?
Uh, currently, we, uh, I believe it's the same, it's the same individual when I arrived here, it's my cousin, no, I, I'm kidding. I am not related, his last name's Leek, so. No, he is, he is on.
Clarifying that, sir. Scared me for a second. I have, but if anyone has another one. Councillor Linton.
It's been since eighty-two since I took an economics class, so I could be off right here. But I would like to know, um, normally I think it's when the, uh, stock market's up, the bond rates goes down and vice versa. So when a bond rates go down, do we keep those bonds, or do we sell those, or what do we do?
It really does depend on the maturity dates, those are pretty locked in, but, and also the type of the bond. Um, I'm not going to claim to be an expert in the bond market, but it depends on whether it's a corporate bond or a municipal court, uh, municipal court, municipal bond. Which are tied to, um, very strict restrictions on the kinds of investment. As, as a government entity, we can only invest in certain types of, of corporate bonds i- in the first place. Most of our holdings are in government-type municipal bonds.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other council questions? Uh, make sure everybody's had a chance, okay.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that it's the council that gives you direction on what percentage of, uh. What percentage of markets that you can invest in, is that right?
Uh, to an extent, yes, and then that's in that adopted investment policy that we have.
Okay, and then a follow-up on that, since we've turned over and had a, you as a new financial, uh, finance director. Are there any changes, any shifts that you've made in the, in the portfolio? I can't seem to honestly recall, I'd have to have the previous sheet to really be able to compare it to this sheet. So has there been any movement, um, is there anything that you're looking towards, uh, now that, I mean?
For me, I, I try and maximize the return on the types of investments that we have. Um, I'm really focused on getting out of those lower rates. Um, the problem with having those lower rate investments, and there was nothing we could do with the, the market at the time. Um, but we try, and we're, those are locked in, and they mature, the, the last maturity is about a year and a half, I believe. The last maturity is about a year and a half, I believe, off the top of my head. But some bonds are callable where the market will call them and then they because. But those that are at that such low interest rate are not going to be called by the market. So we're stuck with them, for lack of a better word. But we try and focus on a ratio that, of course, the fact that, you know, just maximizes our return. So whether that's in the pool or in the bond market, it just depends. But I do work closely. Once a week, I meet with our advisor and we we look at those.
Okay, so then really anything that gets called or reaches maturity, you're going to reinvest it in. And the and the best thing that, whether it's corporate, municipal, LGIP, that's going to give us the best return?
That is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Public comment? Okay. Council comments? None? Can I get a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five quarterly investment report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Council McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Right, got the hard part out of the way. Committee reports. Anybody having any committee reports at this time? Counselor Roberts?
I attended the library board, the first meeting that we had in the newly renovated library, which was exciting. The new artwork is up, so if you haven't seen that, it is it is really quite impressive. Some things we talked about briefly. July fourth is going to land on a Saturday this year, which means that for staff days off, because it falls on a weekend, they're going to be closed July third and fourth. So I know where our ways out, but just that'll be up on the calendar that they're going to be closed those two days. The adopted calendar should be on the meeting minutes so people can see for the entire year when the library is going to be open and closed. We got our first quarter report. Obviously, the numbers were down some because we still had some time when we were in the old library and new. But things are trending upward, so quite exciting. They had seventy-seven new library cards issued since they came into the new building. And I can't remember. I wish I had written written this number down, but the new counter is working. And the number of people that came in, especially on day one, when we did the ribbon cutting, was was very impressive. But the attendance of the libraries is is going steady. So very proud of Mr. Rose and his staff and the work that they're doing over there. Phenomenal work, so go visit the library.
Excellent. And good job on the report. Any other council committee reports? Counsel Slinton?
We had a cab meeting last week and had a couple of kids come in. And I think we made a really good impact on what we discussed.
Okay. Any others? Okay, moving on, Mayor's report. It's me. Treats on Main coming up. Halloween coming up this week. We watch out for ghouls and goblins and all that good stuff. What else am I forgetting? I don't know. Council President report.
I just want to say that I got the opportunity to watch the high school production of It's a Wonderful Life that was put on by the their drama team there. That, if you've only ever seen the movie, it presents some challenges to be able to to do it in a live format, which I've never seen before. So I want to say congratulations to them. They ended their production last weekend. And that's really all I've got, except for I just want to remind everyone that we are only months away from the deadline to declare your candidacy for city council. Pick up your form SEL one oh one from Lilly or online, cityofhermiston.com/elections.
What he said. All right, council reports. Okay, sorry. Any council reports? Counsel Durham?
Well, you and I attended the LOC Regional Eleven meeting.
I forgot about that.
And it was nice. It was my first time attending one of those. And there was a lot of discussion about what small cities face as far as issues and what we have in common. Pretty much, we have a lot of things in common.
Lot of things.
And we were also coming up with session titles for the spring conference. So hopefully, there will be a lot of some tours that will be made to like the Sage Center and some other locations here in in our area. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that I appreciate the staff and Counselor, city staff, current and former, that attended Ed Brookshire's funeral. That meant a lot, and especially Mr. Morgan, you know, stepping up and reading in front of the small crowd. And I also attended the volunteer fair that they that the chamber put on. And I want to say thank you to the chamber for putting it on. And there were several organizations there. It was nice to see everybody and, you know, a good turnout. And I believe that's it for me.
Okay. Yes, that was a good good session. We there is a another one coming up in January that Hermiston will be hosting. So as that gets closer, we'll let you know more about it. Any other council report? Counselor?
Kelso, yeah, thank you. Hi.
Kelso.
There you go. I wanted to second what Counselor Durham said. I was at the the Chamber's nonprofit fair, and I had a great time. I was there representing the Hermiston Kiwanis and had a really good opportunity to network with a lot of other nonprofit groups in town. And it was just a special time to meet people who really care about the people in our community and wish to serve them. So kudos to the chamber for putting that on. I thought it was a great event. Also, I had the privilege of attending True Care's Fall Dessert fundraiser on the twenty-first. We got to hear State Rep Greg Smith speak. He was the keynote, and it's just a great organization that cares for women's health care and children in our community. And it's close to my heart, so I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kelso. Okay.
I did this at my church, but I asked my church to pray for the police departments across the country and upcoming things that are happening here in our nation. So I just want to say let's hold them up in prayer that they have the wisdom and compassion and whatever is necessary to deal with the public.
Any other council comments? Youth Advisory Report, two of you over there. What you got for us, guys?
Well, I do I partake in Hermiston High School Marching Band. And we just had our final competition Saturday. We placed second overall musically and fifth overall total, I believe. I don't have any comments.
Well, we won't hold your feet to the fire on that. Appreciate it, though.
You're my favorite.
All right. City Manager stand in?
Yes.
Comments?
I think I just have one thing for you tonight, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. So our next scheduled meeting is on the tenth of November. That's a Monday. The following day is Veterans Day. So kind of just wanted to get a feel from Counsel tonight if we will have a quorum on that Monday night, if people are planning on traveling, if you want us to look at alternative options for that meeting. So just kind of wanted to get some feedback tonight.
I'll be in town. I'm thinking there'll be, it looks like there'll be a quorum, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, we just wanted to follow up with the unique circumstance on that Tuesday for a holiday. Yeah, there's no school that Monday and then Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, there's no school. And so we figured some people may be trying to get out of town, so we just appreciate the feedback. And if you said it tonight, we're going to count on seeing you on Monday.
Well, there's the correction. There is school for the secondary students on Friday. There is no school for K through fifth on Friday.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Lilly. And Brandon, did you want to talk about Treats on Main at all for this Friday?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, thank you for mentioning Treats on Main. Treats on Main will be this Friday, Halloween. Main Street and Festival Street will be closed at twelve PM. So our folks can vacate the street and then we'll start setting up with vendor booths and tables to hand out candy. If any businesses would still like to participate, we'll gladly take them in. Expecting to see around three to four thousand kids downtown on Friday. And then so downtown goes from three to five and then from four to six. The beyond portion will be at the Hermiston Community Center with more games and activities. So it should be a fun day and evening on Halloween. And for all those out there, be safe when you're trick or treating.
All right. Yes. Go ahead, Gabriel.
I just wanted to add to that. This Thursday, I don't know how many of you guys have kids, but there is a trunk or treat at the Hermiston High School from four to six.
Okay.
If anybody wants to attend that.
Excellent.
And that's all the updates I have for you tonight.
All right. Anything else? We are adjourned.